Well, Al French, thank you for joining me for the Tea with Amanda Rowley. Happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You bet.
So, we're going to start off. I see you brought your own tea to the Tea with Amanda, so I got to ask, what are we sipping on today?
It's just, it's self-sweetening tea, Aloha Milo tea.
Oh, Aloha.
Yeah, I can't drink coffee, so the tea is my caffeine hit.
There you go. I'm right in the same boat with you. Yeah, so I've got my mango iced tea here that they make. It's my favorite summer go-to, but not in summer anymore. I'm still in summer mode. I don't know about you, but...
Yeah, no, if it's not this, it's chai tea.
There you go.
With cinnamon, and that's my go-to.
Yeah, oh great, oh great. Well, thank you for coming to sip on some tea and spill the tea with me.
Yeah.
We'll start off, why are you deciding to run again for another term as spoken county commissioner for District 5?
District 5, you know, there's a lot of good things going on right now, and a lot of that has my fingerprints on it, and economic development in the West Plains, you know, financial security with the county, and a lot of other things, and I want to keep that going. I want to be able to continue to give back to this community. I mean, in my real life, I'm an architect and real estate investor, and attracting new businesses, building new businesses is what I do as a profession, and being able to do that for the county and specifically for the West Plains, a great deal of gratification and satisfaction out of that, and there's a lot of good stuff still on the horizon and I want to get accomplished.
There you go. You mentioned the West Plains.
Yes.
I did see that for this election, you have a goal going forward to put in a park out in that area with a lot of activities. Can you tell me what those plans are?
Yeah, so, the West Terrace neighborhood or the Medical Lake interchange is a growing neighborhood, and it, and I anticipate that there'll be more growth there with regard to housing and stuff, and it really, the West Plains area really needs to have a regional park, a park that's centralized that will service both Airway Heights, Medical Lake, Cheney as a regional facility, and so we are, I've been able to secure the funding, and we are in active negotiations with a couple of different property owners to try and...
How big are we talking? I mean...
I think the smallest is probably going to be in that 10 to 15 acre range, and one parcel is in excess of 20 acres, so, and each one of them has unique characteristics, and so, this is, this is a high priority for me, is bringing a regional park to the West Plains area.
And why is that? I mean, we've seen a lot, is it because of the growth in that area? We've seen Amazon, we've seen housing, I mean...
So, you know, it's one thing to have good jobs and good growth, and, but you also need the amenities to be able to maintain that quality of life, and that's, you know, I started out my civic career as a neighborhood activist, and actually, won national award because of my neighborhood leadership, and so, you know, good quality neighborhoods, there's a priority for me, and that means, you know, good schools, libraries, parks, you know, access to public transportation, all of those amenities are what contribute to our quality of life and stuff, and so, you know, the West Plains has been lacking for a regional park, and this has been one of my priorities, is to make that happen.
Part of your campaign for this election, you've really honed in on that experience you bring to the table. You've even gone as far as listing a resume on your website.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, what do you want voters to take away from that? I mean, giving you that edge as we go into the general election.
Well, I mean, the big point is, experience matters. I mean, I sit on a number of state boards where I am elected by county commissioners from across the state to represent the collective interest of counties, and it's because of that experience and that knowledge, I actually just finished a 10-year stint on a better government think tank, where we provide advice and guidance for cities, counties, and special purpose districts on how to deliver a better product, how to deliver better service to your taxpayers and stuff, and so, I sat on that because I have city council experience, I have county commissioner experience, and that enabled me to be a contributing member of that board, and they kept me on for 10 years.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. You are one of the only candidates running for county commissioner who's served both city council and county commissioner, so I wonder, kind of talking about your history, what would you say is maybe something you've worked on in those roles, either roles, that you're most proud of, that's really benefited Spokane County or the city?
Well, I think the biggest outcome of that is understanding the culture and the financial makeup of the city, and understanding the culture and makeup of the county, and how did the two of them, you know, for a long time as a region, the city and the county would compete against each other for economic opportunity, and while we're battling each other, companies are locating over in Post Falls, you know, Cabela's, Buck Knives, you know, I can go on a list of companies that we've lost because we didn't have our act together here, and so, I always thought that if the city and the county could come together as partners, bring your regional strengths together, that we would be stronger, and so, I started the process in 2011 of creating that partnership between the city and the county, and it only took six years to convince my partners on the other side of the river that this would be in our mutual best interest, and changing culture is not easy. I mean, you have fears that you have to overcome, you have history and all of that, but we were able to get there. I mean, thank you to the leadership of Mayor Dave Condon and Council President Ben Stuckard, who on the city side said, you know, yes, let's put down the knives, let's work as partners. We created the West Plains Public Development Authority, which is now known as S3R3, and in the last four years, well, this will be the end of the five years, we brought over 7,000 jobs to the West Plains, over $1.5 billion of economic investment into the West Plains, and so, that's one of those...
And you can see it.
You can see it.
You can't go down I-90 without missing it.
You know, and, you know, from my standpoint, that has brought economic opportunity to people in this community, you know, and I started my civic career at the city, I represented the Northeast District, you know, and the Northeast was, has been financially damaged by, you know, the closing of the rail in that area, then Kaiser Aluminum, and good, hardworking people, but they just needed access to a job, and so, with the Amazon Fulfillment Center, STA did a survey of ridership, and we found that a third of the workers at Amazon came out of Hilliard.
Really?
So, they had access to good-paying job with full medical benefits and educational benefits, and yet they lived in Hilliard, and so, when you talk about that partnership and how we strengthen the whole area, that's a great example of how a project in the West Plains benefited the Northeast part of the city of Spokane, and of course, all of those people that worked there are going to shop in the city, and so the city will enjoy sales tax increases and other benefits from economic development and economic growth, so, that's just one example of where, and that's the, this, the West Plains PDA is the only organization of its kind in the state of Washington. It's a very first of its kind in the state of Washington, so, that's what that experience brings, is that perspective of saying, where are our strengths and how can we combine our strengths and make us stronger?
Kind of touching on this, I mean, West Plains is an area where we've seen a lot of growth. Spokane County, we're feeling the growing pains, we're booming, as it were, so I wonder, looking ahead, if you were to take on another term as county commissioner, what steps would you take to address the current growing pains and prepare for future growth?
Well, one of the things that we've been challenged by through the State's Growth Management Act is our ability to address the housing need. You know, the state has stood in the way of us being able to provide more affordable housing for workforce, as well as that in-migration that's happening, and then the other thing is, COVID has also resulted in folks that can work in Seattle but live in Spokane, or San Francisco, or...
Working remote, yeah.
Wherever, you work remote, and so you've got that pressure as well, so, you know, housing is the next big challenge, and then making sure that we keep pace with our infrastructure. You know, I've brought literally tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure money to this county, and I have those relationships both at the federal level and the state level, and I want to be able to continue to use those relationships. Those relationships don't come overnight. You know, you don't, you don't get elected and automatically have all of this kind of knowledge. You have to bring that with you, and if you don't bring it with you, you're not able to do this job, and that's, that's one of the things that I offer. That's, that's why experience matters. You know, some people say, well, you know, have you been there too long? No, I've got all the energy I had when I was half my age, I love this job, I love serving this community, I actively tell people, I'll die here in Spokane, I know there's some that like to think sooner than later, but this is home, and I want to make it as best as I can.
You mentioned the infrastructure. Your opponent Maggie Yates, she's really honed in on her campaign, looking at infrastructure in the LeToa Valley area. She's proposing, if she wins, a moratorium on building in that area until infrastructure can really meet that growth. I wonder what your thoughts are about that? I mean, would you seek the same thing, or what is your solution to the growth we're seeing in that part of the county?
So, I actually live in LeToa Valley, I live in Eagle Ridge, and that's a great example of where experience matters, because county commissioners don't have any legislative authority in LeToa Valley, none. We couldn't issue a moratorium if we wanted to, and of course, you know, that, that's not a solution, that's a pause. When I served on the planning commission for the city of Spokane in the late 90s, city staff came to us and, and said, we want to put 15,000 residents in LeToa Valley, and myself and another planning commission member by the name of Stan Sterling, who both had experience with Washtod and the valley, said, you don't have the infrastructure to support it. So several minutes went by, and then the engineering department for the city came back and said, well, we want to construct a frontage road that would go from Hastings Road all the way up to Sunset Boulevard, and then, you know, use the Empire Highway as an access point to get into the city, so we're not putting traffic on 195. 195 is a federally designated freight corridor, and Washtod is committed to protecting that freight corridor, so they do not want to use it for residential collector. So, we said, okay, if the city's committed to doing the frontage road, we'll put the growth in that corridor. Well, that was 25 years later, 25 years ago, and the city hasn't done anything, so I just distributed a letter to all the property owners in the valley saying, here's the plan forward, here's a path forward. The city needs to, one, adopt the plan formally, they need to include it in their six-year road plan, they need to fund it, and the city's been collecting mitigation money out of the valley for 25 years, but they didn't spend it in the valley, they spent it on other projects up on South Hill. They need to return that money to the valley and put into place the infrastructure there to be able to support whatever kind of growth is going to happen. The city is in the process of putting in a moratorium, but a moratorium is just a momentary pause.
Right, yeah.
It gives you time to find a solution, the city has to find a solution and be committed to being able to build the infrastructure.
So then what can the county do? What could you do as commissioner? If you're saying the burden lies or the responsibility lies with the city, what can the county do to solve this?
So, since it's inside the city's jurisdiction, we can operate as partners. I chaired the Spokane Regional Transportation Council, chaired it twice now, and in my last term as chair, we did a community outreach to all the residents out there in the valley to make sure that that frontage road scheme was still the best plan for me to move forward, so, that's one of those things that I can do as a county commissioner, to help the city deal with its infrastructure needs, but I cannot take county money and spend it in that corridor, I'm actually prohibited from doing that by the state constitution, but I can work as a partner to help them get access to money to help solve the problem. You know, that's, that's where that experience is very critical. My opponent is under the impression that there is authority for the counties in that corridor, there's none, there's zero. That comes with experience and knowledge. Don't misrepresent what you can do to the public, give them a clear path and a solution, and then have the leadership skills and the knowledge to be able to implement it, that's what I bring to the table.
What are some things that, I know we talked about your goal of the regional park, but what other goals do you have moving forward for Spokane County?
You know, I've not been shy about saying, you know, I sit on the airport board, and we have about 130 aerospace manufacturers, tier ones, twos, and threes here in this community, and I would love to be able to get an aerospace manufacturer located here in Spokane County.
It'd be a lot of jobs.
It'd be a lot of jobs, and a lot of great, high-paying jobs. We have a site out by the airport that would accommodate a million-square-foot facility. Prior to COVID, we were in active negotiations with four manufacturers, then COVID hit, everybody ducked and run.
Yeah.
So we're now starting to reactivate some of those conversations.
Maybe bring those four to back to the table, maybe?
Oh, yes, yeah, and, you know, the state did a competitive analysis back in 2016, and showed that Spokane County is one of the best places to locate an aerospace manufacturing company.
Why is that?
Well, because we have, like I said, about 130 companies that are already part of that aerospace cluster, but we have clear airspace, we have available workforce, we don't have the congestion that you have in Renton, the I-5 corridor, Payne Field, I mean, that, that's just gridlock. I mean, Boeing, you know, when I met with them, they said, you know, they move a lot of their big equipment early in the morning so they don't have to compete with the traffic, but to get from Everett to Renton still took four hours at 3:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
So, you know, I said, shoot, in three hours, I could, you can darn near beat a Spokane and stop for lunch, so...
So airspace and geographically, that's what makes Spokane?
That makes us very competitive and stuff. You know, the Moses Lake has, has got a big airstrip, but they don't have the labor force.
And they just, out at Moses Lake, did you see they just had their first electric?
Yes, yeah.
Wow!
So, so we are primed to be able to have that, that industry here in this community, and I, I'm on the front side of those negotiations, and I want to see that happen, and, a lot of good-paying jobs. I mean, you're talking jobs in the 70, 80, $90,000 range as an average salary, those are good wages, so, that's, that's my ultimate goal.
Yeah, that's great. I'd like to move on, hot topic here in Spokane County, we're at homelessness. We're seeing a lot of unfolding events with the homeless camp near I-90, and there's been some criticism. I've talked to candidates from District 1 and 2, and as well as your opponent, and they've criticized the current Board of County Commissioners for the lack of involvement and approach to finding solutions to homelessness. So, what can we expect from you if you're re-elected to address this issue in our community?
So, those statements are made, quite frankly, out of ignorance, because in the last two and a half years, the county has spent $48.8 million in homeless prevention and homeless, addressing the homeless issue.
But where has that money gone? I think there's been comment to going to the city.
A lot of that money goes to the city because, again, you have a separation of powers, and I cannot go inside the city and dictate to them how they're going to administer programs. I don't have the legislative authority to be able to do that, so what we have done is we've partnered with the city to try and support them financially in a number of initiatives. Have they executed the way I would do it if I was in control? No, they haven't, but it's the best game that we have in town, and as you said, we have to be partners with them, we have to address this issue.
So then why not keep the money, and if you hand it off to the city and can't have a say in how it's used, why not keep it for the county and use it how you would like to address it?
So, one of the, a couple of the programs that we have done at the county level that does address the homeless issue is that we have one-of-a-kind mental health crisis stabilization facility, the only facility of its kind in the state of Washington, where when a police officer encounters somebody that's having a mental health crisis out in the street, before what they would do is they would take him to the jail, jail is not a mental health therapeutic center, and that's not a good solution for the person that's been encountered on the street, and so now with this crisis stabilization facility, the police officer can take him to the stabilization facility, they get treatment, they get medication, they get stabilized, they get access to services so that they can become a contributing member to the community. That's a very successful program, and so that's one of the things that we've done to help deal with the symptoms of homelessness. That also is available for folks that are suffering from drug addiction, so, and then the other thing we've done is, we provide a mental health therapist as a ride-along with our sheriff deputies. Again, our sheriff deputies are not trained to be mental health therapists, but they do encounter people that are having a mental health crisis, so, as they do, we've got a therapist there that can provide those services, and hopefully, de-escalate or address the issue without it becoming a major problem. So, we are contributing to this situation in a constructive fashion, you know, now, recently, the sheriff has said that because of the criminal activity that's happening in Camp Hope, that he is going to use his authority as a sheriff, and of course, as a sheriff, he has authority and jurisdiction over everything within the county borders to be able to come in there and help clean up that camp.
Do you support that intention?
Absolutely, I do support it. In fact, I think all three commissioners support it, because there are bad things that are happening in that camp, things that none of us would be happy to know about, you know, women that are being raped, children that are being abused, open use of drugs, it's, and at some point you have to draw a line in the sand, hold people accountable for their actions, and try and get them into a better path. You know, it's not about, and Ozzy said this, and I support him, it's not about going in there and just arresting everybody in the camp, it's about going in there and saying, you need treatment, we're going to get you access to treatment. The other thing we've done is, we've provided funding for the sheriff for a Homeward Bound program, so sometimes folks are ending up in Spokane, and, you know, they might lose their job or find themselves in a homeless situation, and they want to just return home where they've got loved ones that can take care of them, but they don't have the money to get home. We're providing the funding to be able to allow them to get back to a loving environment, a caring environment and stuff, so that's one of the other programs that we've put into place.
Can you speak to the success of that program? I mean, how regularly is it used? I mean, are we seeing by the handful or dozens? I mean...
I think it's early, in the early stages, the first thing you've got to do is get contact with those people that are suffering, make sure that they know that these funds are available, and so that's part of the early steps that you have to take, and then, you know, the funding is there and it's available, and if, if we run out of that, we will replenish it to be able to make sure that we can get people surrounded by lovely family members that can take care of them.
What more can be done? I understand there's programs and policies that have been put in place that you've listed, but can more be done going forward to address homelessness?
Well, keep in mind that we also contributed financially for the transitional facility that the Salvation Army is operating up in the north end of town. We also contributed millions of dollars for the shelters that the city has been operating...
The trench shelter.
Not the trench shelter, the cannon shelter and, and one of the others, and so we are active participants and players in that environment, but again, the services are located inside the city, so if you're going to keep folks adjacent to those services that they need to get stabilized, that's why those facilities, those shelters are inside the city, so, we're there as partners to take care of some of the financial burden associated with, with the homelessness issue. Like I said, $48.8 million of taxpayer money have gone into trying to help address this issue.
I'd like to move on to public safety in Spokane County. We've seen a recent uptick in drive-by shootings. I was at the same press conference with you, and Board of County Commissioners supported Sheriff Knezevich in sending more funding to help address this.
Absolutely.
But I think, looking forward, what's, what additional steps would you take as county commissioner to reduce this trend of violent crime we're seeing?
So, to be able to reduce it, you have to understand the cause, and the cause for a lot of this additional criminal activity is the legislature making criminal activity no longer illegal, and then the Supreme Court with the Blake decision also taking some of that authority away from our police officers and stuff.
You're talking about the police reform laws?
Yes, so, you know, what we've done is, we've ended up handcuffing our law enforcement officers and not the criminals, and so, you know, that gets out, and then gangs in Southern California and other parts of the west coast know, hey, Spokane is ripe, we're going to go to there, and what we're seeing is an influx of new gang activity coming from other parts of the, of the country, and so, we are standing side by side with Ozzy with financial resources to be able to make sure that he's fully staffed, and he has the resources to be able to address the criminal activity and keep our citizens safe, but it is a ramped-up situation, but it's created by the state, it's not created by anything that we've done here locally, it's, it's a state issue that we're having to respond to.
Does that make you worried for Spokane's future? I mean, you've been here for how many years, and you've seen the changes in our community? I mean, are you worried for Spokane's safety?
Quite frankly, I'm worried about our country. You know, I, I see things going on at the national level, and I just, I just wonder, you know, what has happened to us as a nation, and, you know, when you have, and the criminal activity is not unique to Spokane.
Right.
It's Seattle, Portland, Chicago, I mean, just yesterday, I read an article where the president of McDonald's is talking about pulling McDonald's out of Chicago because it's not safe. Not only not safe in his stores, but it's not safe on the streets, and so he's looking at now relocating his offices, much like Boeing has done, and a number of other companies have pulled out. You know, if you're not a safe community, then it will impact you in a variety of different ways, and one of those is not being attractive to business and, and our citizens. I mean, keeping our citizens safe is one of the reasons why we're so committed to partner with Ozzy and make sure that he's got all the resources to be able to keep us safe, but the other problem, the side effect of this, this whole dialogue about defunding the police, which I am not in favor of, I'm not going to be diverting funds away from, from law enforcement like my opponent wants to do, that's just not going to be part of my makeup, and so, I'm actually a graduate at Citizen Police Academy, I've been through firefighting training, I'm a certified instructor with FEMA, I'm all invested into public safety and knowing what our frontline is having to deal with, and how can I support them in that effort, but, you know, with all of the conversation about devaluing the police officers, it's not surprising that a lot of folks have decided, maybe I don't want to go into law enforcement, maybe I want to go into a different career, and we're seeing that in the challenges of fulfilling vacancies, you know, as people my age retire, where is that next generation or two to fill those shoes? And they've decided, you know, we don't necessarily want to go into law enforcement because it's not a valued profession anymore like it used to.
Yeah, this results in that more aggressive recruiting strategy that the sheriff's offices had to take.
We have been very aggressive with not only the sheriff's office, but also our detention services and our, in our jail, and so what, what is happening now is, our detention service officers are taking that next bump in salary and becoming police officers, but there's no one to backfill them in the, in the jail, and so that's, that's another one of those consequences. You know, being a county commissioner means that you have to be knowledgeable enough to be able to understand what the problem is, and creative enough to find a solution to address it, and that's where that experience comes in.
Do you, do you fit the bill?
I think I do, you know, it's, it's not a surprise to anybody that we'll probably be in a recession next year on a national level, our economy is certainly heading in the wrong direction, and I've navigated two governmental entities through a recession. I know how to prioritize, I know how to keep the lights on, and that knowledge and experience is something that I'm the only one in this race that has. You know, when I first joined the county, our credit rating was significantly less than what it is now, and our reserves were, you know, almost non-existent, and in the last 12 years, we now have the highest credit rating of any county our size, the highest. That becomes, that comes from good stewardship, conservative approach to how you spend your dollars, and making sure that you're making good investments.
Do you take some credit for that?
I do, you know, in that 12-year period, I'm the only commissioner that survived that entire process to get us to where we're at, so, I take a great deal of pride in that. I am a conservative. I am a conservative, conservative businessman. I've had as many as 105 employees at one time. I know how to run a business, I know how to recruit a business, I know how to grow a business.
And check out his resume, if you don't believe him.
Yes, if you don't believe me, check out the resume, you bet. Well, that's what the campaign is about. I mean, I'm applying for this job. And if you're going to hire me to do the work for you, you ought to know what my background is, you ought to know what the experience level is that I bring to the table, and am I going to be a valued employee for you? Because I work for the citizens of this community.
And sticking with public safety, this election, we have a new Spokane County sheriff up for vote. So, we've got John Knowles endorsed by Sheriff Kenezovic and Wade Nelson. I'm wondering, moving forward, if you continue on as county commissioner, how will your relationship look like, or what will your relationship look like with the new sheriff, whoever that might be?
So, I have endorsed John Knowles. I've had the opportunity to work with him over the years. I know what caliber of an individual he is. And I know that his philosophy and his commitment to the job is very similar to what Ozzy's was when he first started out. And you know, Ozzy has obviously been doing it now for a while, and he's a great asset. I mean, as an individual, I love him and Paula to death. I mean, they're great people, but as a sheriff, he is the gold standard. And it'll take a while for us to replace him, but I think the closest thing we have to that is John Knowles and stuff. So, I'm anxious to work with John, and he understands the culture, and he understands the organization. And he also understands Ozzy, and I think he's learned a lot in terms of being mentored by Ozzy.
On the flip side, could go either way. I think we lost a light. Whoa, something turned out. It got dark all of a sudden. All of a sudden it seemed dark.
I'm not as bright as I used to be.
The sun is gone. On the flip side, we could see Wade Nelson in office, that is a possibility.
We could, that's right.
So, I guess, could I ask you about that? I mean, what could we expect that relationship to be?
I'm committed to making sure that law enforcement in this county is the best that it can be. And the role that I play is making sure that they have the resources necessary to address the needs of the community and stuff. So, if Wade is successful, I will work with Wade. You know, one of the things I learned when I was with the city council is that I don't get to pick and choose who I work with, the voters do. And my commitment to the voters is I will work with whoever you put in that office. And that's my commitment to the voters to make sure that, you know, they see something, they value that, I'm going to value it, we're going to work together.
I'd also like to talk about, this is a historic race for Spokane County. It's, we've now gone from three to five commissioned districts, and you are now part of District Five, newly drawn District Five. So, I wonder, what are your thoughts about, we could see for the first time in decades, a Democrat sitting on the Board of County Commissioners? I mean, what do you think about that?
You know, it's really interesting because when this first, this conversation first surfaced, and actually, it surfaced in 2015 when my fellow commissioners at that point put the proposition of going to five on the ballot, I went back to 1941, and I took every single commissioner and every single board for the last almost 80 years and said, "What was the makeup of the board? You know, has it always been Republican, or was there a time when it was all Democrats?" And as you look at all of those county commissioners through that period of time, the difference between Republican and Democrat was three, that's all. There were times where the board was all blue, and blue for several cycles.
Right.
And stuff. So, I don't believe that the makeup of the board is based upon party as much as it is caliber of the people that have run. John Ross Kelly ran as a Democrat and won. Jack Garrity ran as a Democrat and won. Brian ran as a Democrat and won. So, we've had good Democratic commissioners. And so, I think it's more about the caliber of the candidate than it is about the party. So, yeah.
Now, running for District Five and living, how long have you lived in District Five as it looks now?
Twelve, well, as it currently composed, 12 years. The boundaries have moved and stuff, but 12 years.
That's good. So, what would you say are the most pressing issues in District Five right now?
So, it's an interesting dichotomy of the county because I include Indian Trail, which I used to work with extensively when I was on the city council, and Lower South Hill, by Lower South Hill, I mean, south of 29th, going down to Hatch Road, Leita Valley, West Harris, Airway Heights, Medical Lake, and Cheney. And all of those entities are unique in terms of their needs.
I mean, it's a big area, too.
It is a big area.
Big district.
In terms of landmass, I think it's actually the largest district in the county. But I think there are some similarities between them. Growth is an issue. You know, you have Airway Heights, Medical Lake, and Cheney that want to grow. You have Indian Trail that says, "We're grown enough, thank you very much, leave us alone." And South Hill and Leita Valley obviously is having some challenges with infrastructure. So, it's not a one solution fits all. It's having the experience and knowledge to know that each one of these parts of the district have unique challenges, and what is it that I can do to be able to address those challenges? And fortunately, I've been able to do that for the last 12 years, and I think I can do that for a couple more years left.
Any other issues in the district? I know growth sounds like is a main component. Does anything else stand out, or?
Well, I mean, obviously, you have a water issue for Airway Heights, and to some extent, Medical Lake. And so, I do have a proposal that's working its way through the Department of Ecology that will bring new, fresh, clean water to the West Plains, and not only address their current needs, but also fix the problem with the PFOS and PFAS out of Fairchild, but also be in a position to support growth for the next, you know, foreseeable several decades and stuff. So, that's one issue that is top of mind for me. The other thing is making sure that we keep pace with development with infrastructure. You know, when we did Amazon, we also invested tens of millions of dollars into infrastructure with the Medical Lake overpass, upgrading Geiger Road, and all of the infrastructure investment we've done there to help facilitate that. And I think that's critical. I mean, if you don't keep pace with growth with infrastructure, then you end up spending more time behind your steering wheel than you do with your family. And that is clearly something that I do not want to end up having to do, either for me or for anybody in my district and stuff. But you know, as I look at the county over the last 12 years, Bigelow Gulch is a great example of work that I've done to try and provide infrastructure dollars to improve the county and stuff. And you know, I'm recognized as an expert in transportation systems throughout the state. Other county commissioners throughout the state continue to select me to represent their collective interest. I sit on the County Road Administration Board, the Transportation Improvement Board, Freight Mobility State Investment Board. I've worked with the Joint Transportation Council.
The list goes on.
The list goes on. You might check my resume.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, transportation is critical. I mean, you know, not becoming I-5 and not becoming Seattle, I think is critical for us.
I want to talk numbers. Looking at, Al, looking at the primary election, I mean, you're running as a Republican and incumbent to the Board of County Commissioner, but the primary election didn't necessarily come heavily in your favor. We saw Maggie Yates get a bit more favor of the vote. And so, I wonder, do you think this poses a challenge for you going ahead into the general election?
I think the anomaly that we had in the primary was that Don Harmon ran as a Republican when he's never been a Republican in his life. In fact, there is no record of him ever being a Republican. He's always been a liberal. And so, early on, he made a statement in the Spokesman Review that he wanted to regain political relevance. Well, what better way to regain political relevance than to, "One is a Republican, take votes for me," and then carry him over to the Democratic Party? I don't think that Don Harmon represents the kind of Republican that the voters in the West Plains are going to attract, too.
Were you surprised by his endorsement, then? I mean, knowing this.
No, no, actually, we weren't surprised by it at all. I mean, you know, I don't want to get into the personal record of Don Harmon when he was mayor and ultimately ran out of the city of Airway Heights, but his record as an elected official and his record with criminal justice system are almost equal. And you know, it's an endorsement, we never saw it. I have the endorsement of the Mayor Bowman, previous Mayor Ritchie, previous Mayor Matt Peterson for Airway Heights, Mayor Grover for Cheney, Mayor Cooper for Medical Lake, Mayor Woodward, and Dave Condon. I give you a whole list of mayors.
And what do you want that to mean to voters?
What it means is that their elected leaders and I are in sync, and that we work together to address the issues important to the people in that community. That's why those endorsements, from my standpoint, are very important because we're talking about elected officials that have integrity. We're talking about elected officials that their voters have said, "We want you to help lead us as a community," and they're saying, "We need Al French to work with us side by side to be able to achieve our goals." And so, that means a lot to me. And not only do I value their endorsement, I value the relationship because we get some incredible things done together.
Let's see, want to talk about your campaign a little bit more. Transparency is one of the big issues that you want to tackle in county government. So, how do you plan to do that? What about transparency do you want to change?
I think, you know, the more that the public understands what we're doing and why we're doing it, the better confidence they have in the decisions that we make. And you know, Commissioner Kearns and I came together and we passed a transparency resolution that requires all of our union contract negotiations to be done in the open public. And the majority of our unions have negotiated new contracts under that format. We do have one large union that's resisted, and we are working to try and find a path forward. But you know, the biggest expense we have as a county government is wages and benefits. And the public deserves, the public and union members have a right to know how those negotiations are being conducted. And so, that is now in the open public. And you know, the city tried to do it and ended up in court. We've been successfully doing it now for a couple years, and that's one of those things that I take a great deal of pride in, and saying, you know, everything we do is an open book. And you know, to the fullest extent of the law, we're going to provide you access to your county government. We're here as servants of you, and so, we can't...
What about the access and transparency to decisions made by the board, aside from union? But what about those decisions and transparency behind that?
All of our decisions. We don't make any decisions behind closed doors. Everything is done in the open. And everything, all of our meetings where decisions are made, are made in the open, they're broadcast, they're videotaped, they are available for anybody that can zoom in and watch government and process and stuff. You know, and now, we provide opportunities for people to testify at the beginning of every meeting and to also testify in every action that we take. So, I don't know how much more transparent you can be. If there is something that we can do that makes it better, then I'm all in.
I think Michael Cathcart, running for District Two, has talked about transparency as well. It's a hot point to this election. One of his suggestions, if I recall, maybe making access to the Board of County Commissioners be more user-friendly on the website. So, I wonder if, have you been on the website recently for agendas, or?
All of our agendas are posted on the website.
They are, yes.
Yeah, everything is...
But maybe more user-friendly?
Well, if you've got a specific suggestion, you know, share it with me so that we can pass it on to IT. I mean, we've pretty much incorporated a lot of things. I think part of the challenge that Mr. Cathcart is probably struggling with a little bit is, you know, the city of Spokane, you know, even though the voters by a 78% margin said, "We want union contract negotiations to happen in the public," you know, that's not happening and stuff. So, when you talk about transparency, we are actually more transparent than the city of Spokane, or for that matter, any other city or jurisdiction in the county. So, but if there's areas for improvements, let me know, you know, we will pursue it.
Did want to bring up, your opponent had mentioned with me that she would seek to restructure the Spokane County Board of Health, providing more representation specifically with nurses and physicians. You were a part of the decision-making and events that unfolded with Dr. Lutz's firing. So, where do you stand on that? I mean, would you be resistant to restructuring the Board of Health?
You know, it's interesting, if my opponent wants to change the state law, she's running for the wrong office. She needs to run for the state legislature because what we did is we complied with the state law to the letter, to the letter. And that's a state law that her party created. Keep in mind, the Democrats control the state House and Senate. It's their law. They passed it. And they, their state legislators felt that having a doctor on the health district was not needed. It's interesting.
Do you agree with that? Where do you stand?
It's interesting. Well, bear with me here for a minute, because the health district went from the early 1970s till 2011, 40 years without a doctor on the health board, 40 years, not a single doctor. In 2011, a doctor was appointed. You know who that was? Dr. Lutz. You know who appointed him? Me.
I can't remember the name, but prior to that...
Dr. Lutz was the first doctor that we've appointed in 40 years.
There was a female doctor, and I can't remember her name.
She was a health officer, and that's Kim Thorberg.
Kim, thank you.
She's the health officer, she's not on the board.
Okay.
And stuff. So, the only board member that was a doctor in that 40-year period was Dr. Lutz. And I appointed him not because he was a doctor. I appointed him because I wanted diversity of thought on the health district board. And then...
So, you saw value in having a doctor's voice?
No, I said, "I didn't appoint him because he was a doctor. I appointed him because of his other experience and the enlightenment that he might bring to the board. But I didn't appoint him because he was a doctor." He ultimately became the health officer. And during that course, there were a number of things that I did not agree with, the number of activities that he was engaged in that I did not agree with. But I was not in a position to change it. Had he been an employee for the county, he would have been terminated on any one of the five violations that he committed. And it's interesting to me that a couple of those violations, had a Republican committed them, they'd be out on the keister. But because they were a Democrat doctor that committed them, there's tolerance and stuff. And so, so when the board, the board decided that it was time for Bob to go, I did join him and said that, you know, he was hired because of his credentials, he was fired because of his conduct. And so, that's a separate issue with regard to the makeup of the health district board. The board is not a medical board. People keep on wanting to try and make it a medical board, it's an administrative board. The state legislature, controlled by the Democrats, understood that it's an administrative board, and that's why they did not require that a doctor be on the board. I find it interesting that the people that are complaining the most about the doctor not being there are Democrats that are complaining about a law that the Democrats put into place. If you want to change it, that happens in Olympia, it doesn't happen here at the county. We obeyed the law to the letter. And I'll continue to do that as a county commissioner. That's my job, obey the law. I take an oath to do that.
Well, spill the tea for me, Al. We've talked about this, your focus here is your experience that you bring to the table. But tell voters, what makes you stand out going into the general election? But tell voters, what makes you stand out going into the general election against your opponent, Maggie Yates?
Every promise I made to the voters since I've been in office, I've kept. And I'm all about producing a product. I'm all about giving you an outcome. I'm all about outcomes. When you look at my record, I've achieved a number of things that have benefited this community and I'll continue to do that. I don't get locked up in paralysis of analysis. I achieve outcomes. And that's what I want to continue to do. As an architect and a businessman, that's how I survive, is to achieve an outcome, to benefit my client. In this case, my client is my employer and that's the citizens, the taxpayers. And I'll continue to deliver, much like I delivered on Amazon and Caterpillar and on and on and on, a whole litany of things, much like I've delivered on infrastructure, much like I've delivered on criminal justice. I will continue to work to deliver that because I have the knowledge, the skill set, and the leadership. I've actually won a national award for my leadership by the American Public Transportation Association. Single award in the nation, and that came to me, and I'm the only elected official in the state of Washington ever receive it. I take a great deal of pride in that, not because I received the award, but because of the work that I put in to make it so that I could. And so that's what I bring to the table. My opponent has absolutely zero experience in doing this job. I've got a record of accomplishment and that's what I hope the voters will see and value when it comes to voting on November 8th.
Well, thank you so much, Al, for spilling the tea, sharing some tea with me or bringing your own. A unique way to come to the tea. But thank you so much and good luck on the general election.
Thank you, appreciate it.